Sure, let's see, Ms. Tabashnik.
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Kanter?
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
And Mr. Scholman?
Here.
You have.
Um, for the entire meeting, we'll be seating Ms. Tabashnik. Um, first item of business is, um, uh, public hearing. Uh, this is a special permit and a CAM application. Uh, 24 Van Zand LLC and PI Motor Cars, 24 Van Zand Street, District Three, Block Thirty-Eight, Lot Three. Proposed motor vehicle repair use within an existing one-story building. Uh, I don't know if there's any public, but let me, uh, explain the manner in which we, uh, run our public hearings. Uh, the applicant or the applicant's representative, uh, will, uh, explain, uh, what it is, uh, they wish to do during, which, uh, the members of the commission are welcome to ask any questions they have. Um, when, uh, the applicant has completed their presentation, we will open it up to, uh, the public for comment. Um, and, um, we just ask, uh, that, uh, commenters be civil. Uh, keep their comments as brief as they can while at the same time making sure they cover all the issues they wish to. Um, because, uh, members of the public have only one opportunity, uh, to, uh, speak at these, uh, public hearings. Um, when, uh, the public has completed, uh, their comments, uh, we return to, uh, the applicant for final uh, comments again during which commission members are welcome to ask any questions, uh, they have. Uh, we will, uh, then close the public hearing and, um, uh, open up, uh, discussion which, uh, we hope will lead to a, uh, decision um, uh, in, uh, one direction or the other. Uh, with that, Attorney Sachi, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Okay, um, now I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. I wish you all health and prosperity in 2024. Let's put 2023 behind us all and move forward to, to a year that's perhaps a little less, um, onerous on all of you from a zoning and planning commissioners perspective, given the year that you and the staff have had with the new zoning regulations that you've just adopted. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for all of your efforts, uh, and I wish you all the best in the new year. Uh, for the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy. I represent the owner and applicant. The owner is 24 Van Zand Street LLC and the applicants are 24 Van Zand Street and P1 Motor Cars. Present with me this evening is Tom Pasalacqua. He is the owner of the property and the business for which he is seeking the approvals from you on a special permit and CAM application. A little bit of housekeeping, the applications were filed on November twenty-first. Neighbors were notified by certificate of mailing on November twenty-eighth and that certificate has been returned to the file. Uh, the neighbors were also notified of tonight's public hearing by certified mail return receipt requested on December twenty-first. And those, uh, green cards evidencing, uh, notice, uh, receipt of notice by property owners who are but are located across the street, along with any copies of letters that were returned and any information on letters that we don't have either the green card or the return letter, those were packet, that packet was delivered to the staff today, so it should also be in your file. As I mentioned, the applicant is 24 Van Stan Street LLC and P1 Motor Cars. The property is at 24 Van Zand Street. It's District Three Lot, excuse me, District Three, Block Thirty-Eight, Lot Three. It's right on Van Zand Street, very close to the Norwalk, um, East Norwalk Public Library and the fire station. It is in the neighborhood business zone and is at the far end of the coastal area management zone. The property is about thirteen thousand square feet and it's improved with the six thousand six hundred square feet one-story building that was constructed in the nineteen seventies, most recently occupied by an overhead door company. And there's an on-grade parking lot in front of the building, which has been there since the, the building was constructed. There are commercially developed properties to the east and the west and residentially developed properties to the south on the other side of the property, to the rear of the building. Um, I mentioned that the property is within the far reaches of the CAM zone and the coastal resource, which is the Norwalk River, is, um, somewhat distant from this property and it is separated by streets and curbs and sidewalks and developed properties from the riverside all the way over to Van Zand Street. The proposal before you is twofold. There is a special permit application and a coastal area management CAM short form application to allow the adopt adaptive reuse of the building from an overhead door company to an exotic motor car, uh, motor car, motor vehicle repair facility run by Mr. Pasalacqua, who has, uh, extensive experience in this industry. Uh, the proposal is to use the interior of the building to service between four and six cars a week. No carcasses or wrecks would be stored outside. That's not the business model. Mr. Pasalacqua services, um, predominantly Ferraris, but also other high-end motor vehicles such as Lamborghinis and Porsches. It's all on an appointment basis. There are no walk-ups or walk-ins, for lack of a better word. Um, all of his clients make appointments to bring their vehicle to the site. The vehicles are brought inside the site. All work is conducted on the interior. And as a matter of fact, there are no vehicles stored outside in the parking lot overnight or when the, the business is closed and certainly not on the street. We don't propose any additions to the building other than, uh, there may be some cosmetic upgrades, uh, in the next coming year, perhaps a paint job. But, uh, there is nothing proposed to expand the building, put a second story, any additions to the front or the rear. The building will stay as is. If a sign is proposed at some point, Mr. Pasalacqua is aware that he would be required to receive separate sign permits. He's also investigated the, uh, capability of the building to withstand perhaps some solar panels on the roof. Um, he's taken a look at that preliminarily. Next step, if he gets the approvals from this commission to move forward with his proposal, he would have to engage a structural engineer to make sure that the roof system is capable of handling the weight load of, um, solar panels that might be able to be installed on the building, but he is certainly investigating that option. And since no vehicles are stored outside at any point in time, it doesn't make much sense to suggest that, um, canopy, solar canopies be installed in the parking lot. Hours of operation are very typical, Monday through Friday from eight to four-thirty. Uh, select Saturdays, and again, it's all by appointment. In addition to Mr. Pasalacqua, there would be two other employees, so it's very low volume, low impact, um, operation. So low volume that we suggested to the staff and the staff agreed that it was not necessary to have a traffic report for a four-to-six motor vehicle passenger car repair facility at this site. That would be the, the extent of activity during the week. Uh, let's see, what else? Um. Oh, all agency sign-offs have been secured and submitted to staff and those include Public Works, Fire, Water Pollution Control, South Norwalk Electric and, and Water and the Transportation, Mobility and Parking Department. So all of those are in the file. There's nothing outstanding. Uh, that basically is the, is the proposal to you in a nutshell. Uh, we did not submit architectural plans since the building will remain as is and, um, put Public Works reviewed the site and reviewed the existing stormwater drainage systems and issued their sign-off. So I, with that, I will conclude the presentation I have to make to you. I welcome any comments you may have, any questions, and certainly Mr. Pasalacqua is here if you have further questions of him or his operation. And if there are any questions or comments for the public, we would just ask for a few minutes at the end to respond to those and summarize. So I, this is probably the fastest presentation I've ever made to you, but I think it's rather straightforward. It's a, a productive use of a structure that's been a commercial structure for many, many years. With that, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions from the commissioners?
Uh. I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Hey, uh, how many car service, um, businesses in a three-block radius from this establishment? Car repair?
There are a few, but as far as, I know there's Casali Auto Body, which is further west. Um, there may be one other, but, um, the total number in this, uh, from East Avenue to Four Point Street, I don't know the total number, but there is Casali. Um, Tom, do you know what, what others there are?
Uh, there's Casali, I believe there's, uh, automotive professionals towards the end of Van Zand. Uh, that's all that I know of, um, currently.
I think so.
It's, it's, okay, I, I feel as though there's more, so my question is about saturation.
Well, as we mentioned, this is a, this is a very niche market. It's not, um, it, first of all, it's not, uh, going to serve, uh, customers whose cars are in accidents. So it's not like the wrecks come there or the tow list from the city of Norwalk Police Department. Mr. Pasalacqua is not asking to be on the city's tow list, so it's not that market. It's his own specific clientele who come to this site with Ferraris. I mean, I, I wish I could be one of his clients and have a, a first and needed services, but it's not the typical automotive repair that you would see, um, at some of the other locations where they, they service any other kind of vehicle that, that needs servicing and don't necessarily have to do that by way of, um, appointment. This is appointment only and only for those high-end vehicles. So I think his market is a very specific market that he has, um, he has cultivated over, over the twenty years in the business.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No Jaguars?
Certainly, if they're, if they're needed service, Tom can handle those and bring them right, make an appointment, come on in. What color is yours, Mr. Rowena?
Black.
All right, if there are no further questions, uh, we'll open it up, uh, to the public. Brian, would you please explain uh, to, uh, any member, I believe there's only one member, uh, of the public, um, um, viewing this, uh, how they can access, uh, the hearing?
Sure, so if you'd like to speak, uh, regarding this application, you hit the raise your hand tool. It's the, the bottom of your screen. You would just click that once. Seeing nothing, Mr. Scholman.
All right, let's give it one more minute.
Nothing.
Okay. All right, um, then the, uh, public comment period is, um, uh, completed. Uh, I'll turn it back to you, Attorney Sachi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to mention one other thing. One of the staff comments in the report was to eliminate two parking spaces closest to the sidewalk and install landscaping in those areas. Uh, we are more than happy to work with staff to come up with a plan that works, that's reasonable in those two areas. Uh, Tom had tried to engage services of a landscape, landscape architect over the past couple of weeks to come up with a plan that we could have submitted prior to tonight's date, but given the holidays and the, um, the, the short period of time between when we received the notice from staff and tonight, it just wasn't possible. But we will certainly work with either Mr. Kleppen or Ms. Andrewsowski or Mr. Baker to come up with a plan that's reasonable that addresses their concern. And I, that was the only comment in the staff report. We just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. We were aware of it and we're happy to abide by it. Um, there's no reason for me to go through all of the standards of review. They're set forth in our moving papers and, but other than to say that we meet or exceed all of the standards of review for special permit, section one eighteen, uh, fourteen fifty, and also the requirements for review under this application. This is a general resource, general development application. There are no specific coastal resources or specific coastal policies that are impacted by this development and we don't anticipate any impact on the coastal resources by virtue of the adaptive reuse of the building. So with that, um, that will conclude our presentation. If you have any comments, questions for us, we're happy to answer them. We look forward to your action tonight, if that's at all.
Okay, uh, any final questions, uh, before we go to the resolution? Um, seeing, uh, or hearing none. Uh, Brian, can we pull up, uh, the draft resolution? And can we make it just a little bit bigger? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would might amend is that, um, on number three, which goes to the point where Attorney Sachi was just speaking about it, you might want to add, um, native and then climate tolerant species.
All right, let's do that. And Brian, can you bring it up just a little bit so you can see the last numbers?
Since they said they were looking at the solar, is there any, can we put it on here or no? Because it's a site plan.
I think since they indicated that, I think we could, I don't have the exact language in my head and I don't see that above, but I'll just zoom back up to check.
That's sixteen, Steve, sixteen.
Say sixteen, Brian?
Yeah.
Oh, cool, sorry.
Yep, so, there you go.
All right, now.
Thank you, Brian.
Going, going back, uh, to three, if. Do we want to, uh, call out the number of parking spaces there? Uh, the, 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 I believe it's two that, uh, uh, you wanted to see removed and that they're willing to remove?
Yeah, put two there.
Okay.
And, and then the only other thing, Steve, is the effective date. It looks like it was twenty-twenty-three. Just have to update that.
On the bottom?
Yeah. Nope, the next one up, that's the denial one.
Nope.
Oh, up there, yes. You're.
Yeah, I'm just cleaning up.
Oh, okay, right there. Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rowena has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Mr. Williams has seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? Um, if not, um, let's do a roll call.
Okay, I can, um, Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Do we leave someone out? Oh, okay, yes.
I don't think so, but unless they jumped off screen.
All right, uh, it's, uh, unanimous, uh, it passes.
Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, and also thank you for the staff for your assistance on this application. Um, pleasant rest of the evening and I hope it's short. See you all soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we're going to move on then to, uh, the, uh, second application. Um, and, uh, public hearing twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-three, SP slash CAM, uh, one thirty-two Water Street LLC, one thirty-two Water Street, District Two, Block Eighty-four, Lot Sixteen. Conversion of existing second floor
Yep.
to three dwelling units. Um, and who is representing the owner?
Uh, I am. Hi, Commissioners, my name is Brian Kirschner. Um, I'm the developer for Kirschen Homes and Constructions and with me is our architect, Dennis Peters.
Okay, you have the floor.
Um, so our application is to, uh, renovate existing space on the second floor of an existing four-story building and to convert that to three, uh, two-story, I'm sorry, um, two-bedroom apartments. Um, the owners of, the new owners of one thirty-two Water Street are a combination of All Seasons Marina and GNC Marine Services. All Seasons is a, um, boat retailer and Marina Services company out of Norwalk and GNC Marine Services is a, uh, dock bulkhead and seawall builder also out of Norwalk. Uh, the interest in adding and renovating to three apartments instead of commercial spaces to try and, uh, help the owners keep their economic viability on the property. Um, they're hesitant to try and convert to more commercial office space in this market considering, you know, we have a, a large amount of unoccupied office space in Fairfield County as it is and the location is so unique, they thought three apartments overlooking the river would, would have a high draw. Um. I think that's, that's really it. Um, Dennis is here with us if, so he can review the uh, proposed floor plans and then I can answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Peters, uh, the floor is yours.
Dennis, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Um. Brian, if I could always pull up the plans, if you wanted to walk it through, it's pretty, I guess, straightforward from.
Yeah, that would be fine. I can do it. If for some reason we can't hear Dennis, I can walk you through the plans.
Let me share it.
So what you're looking at now is, is the first floor of the building, which we is unoccupied at the moment and is not part of this application. We don't plan on doing anything with it currently, and that will be subject to any future permitting. Um, what you're seeing here now is our proposed second floor. Um, you have two adjacent two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartments. And then we're proposing a small one-hundred-and-forty-square-foot addition to connect, uh, and give a formal entrance to our third apartment, which is currently an existing kind of conference room. Um, the whole point of that is to add access to that side of the building because it doesn't have a formal entrance. You actually have to walk around the back of the building and then underneath the fire escape to get in a side door. We now have access to the front door and the elevator. Uh, and then that would be a proposed, um, two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment. You can see the, the layouts here. Uh, each apartment is between eleven-hundred-and-seventy and twelve-hundred-and-thirty square feet, depending on the layout. Um, this is a sprinkler building, so we would have a full sprinkler system included as, you know, approved by the fire marshal. Um, and that's, that's really it. Third floor and the fourth floor are two existing offices, which we do not propose to do anything with at the time. They have uh, existing tenants, which our clients would like to keep. And then you can see this is just the proposed, uh, one-hundred-and-forty-square-foot uh, addition and hallway, so that's the, the front elevation of it.
Today, what's the space being used as? Anything?
Uh, it's unoccupied at the moment. Yeah, this is the former, um, Tomage Oyster Building. So this was the commercial oyster space, but that was actually demoed, um, by the Blooms before we took ownership of the building, so it's kind of just unoccupied at the moment.
Um, um, is, is there any green space in the back?
There's not. It's just, uh, it's currently a paved workspace. That's where the Blooms used to run fork trips, fork trucks, excuse me, to, um, you know, load oysters in and out of the, the two stories of the building. Uh, we don't have any plans to do that now only because of the proximity to the, um, the river and the, the clients do potentially want to use forklifts back there as part of the potential and improved Marina Services, but we're certainly open to working with zoning staff if, if that's a consideration.
So is this a commercial, is it a commercial, um, development or residential?
Both. It's, so we'd like to use just the second floor to add three apartments on an existing and then the exterior of the property is two acres, which would have commercial, uh, boat and Marina Services that are kind of already in place.
So you would leave the back paved. It would be, um, paved lot?
At this time, yes.
How many parking spaces for residential?
Uh, we have, we have twenty-two allocated parking spaces at the moment, proposed for residential and the two offices above. Um, the site can actually support up to forty-five spots should we need. And I think that's kind of dependent on what we decide, um, you know, the, the full use of the three floors will be.
Um, I, I want to note, uh, that Commissioner Chapin Bryce has, uh, joined us. Um, I also wanted to comment, remind, uh, commission members, uh, we had a letter from Deep about this project, uh, which, uh, raised, um, uh, some, uh, serious, uh, issues because it's in the flood zone um, regarding, uh, dry access, um, among others. Um, and, um, I, I wanted to get feedback from commission members on how you felt, uh, about that letter from, uh, Deep. Uh.
Are we required to read that letter out loud like the other one?
I don't believe so, Steve. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, just, uh, the referral from the amendment you are, but not this.
Frankly, though, I'm having trouble with Deep these days. It feels like everything they're saying is uh, against any form of sort of multifamily development period in any way, shape or form. So I understand the egress point, but people come, sorry?
In blood plate?
Yeah, yeah, of course. Um, so I don't, it's three units. It doesn't seem like it's the most, you know, that big of a deal.
Count it more than three. Sir, how many units?
Three.
The building has other stuff in it. Um, JJ, it has commercial and then they're, they want to use this, what is existing commercial space and make it into residential space. Um, a question more for Steve Kleppen, if I may, Lou.
Hmm.
So if, if we approve these residential units in here and then with the zoning rewrite and the industrial zoning rewrite, we did talk about some retail, some residential, some commercial, but if we, sorry, if we approve this, um, does it, will it have an impact on, you know, future development in this particular zone?
No, I, I don't think so. Um, how they're, you know, proposing to use it is semi-consistent with what we were talking about previously. Um, I don't, I didn't, I mean, I think three units when spread across that whole site's not, you know, obviously it's not nearly maxing out what, what they could. So I think they're just that it seems like the main driver of what they're proposing is the marine-related water-dependent uses and this is something they're using to support the financing of the site. It's just a, seems like for, at least reading between the lines, it's a more viable economic option for them than trying to find another office tenant to fit into that spot.
Okay, and if, if this were, uh, purely a one-hundred percent residential building, would they be required to lift it with whatever investment of monies they're putting into converting these units or this commercial space into residential space? Look at it as a residential property. It, it's in the flood zone and perhaps in the velocity zone, but is it, would it be required to be lifted?
But potentially, um, there are some exemptions for historic buildings. If they make the ground floor residential, that, that changes the equation for us as opposed to, you know, if it's okay if you have a commercial first floor and it floods and it's just, you know, damage to property versus potential damage to, you know, a person if they're on that ground floor. So yeah, we definitely change how the structure's handled. Steve, can, can you comment on the, on the part of the deep letter where it was talking about if they did this, they, they would, um, the, the, I got the impression that they would have to give up the water-dependent use on the first floor according to deep. I didn't, I didn't quite get that, but it did say that, I thought. I don't recall reading through that. I know they talked about, um, uh, potentially considering flood-proofing measures and then also looking at. Well, I thought they got into that whole fifty percent rule, uh.
Did. They said that if they, they, they said do a substantial improvement calculation. If they are at the fifty percent or more or whatever and they have to update it, then it would have an adverse impact on the use of the building to support the only water-dependent use on site.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you do a, if you have a mixed-use building, so the first floor and, and you're in the flood zone, you have a different ways to, to flood-proof your building. You could do wet flood-proofing or you could do dry flood-proofing. So what they let you do is they let you continue to have a water-dependent use on the first floor and that could be in the flood zone. You could, and you would not have to raise the building. You'd be able to do other means to where the, you'd essentially, if there's a flood coming, you'd be able to put up some sort of like floodgates around the building. There's, they give you different options to, to flood-proof. You'd essentially, if there's a flood coming, you'd be able to put up some sort of like floodgates around the building. There's, they give you different options to to floodproof. Commercial building.
So is that caveat that they raised? Is that something we shouldn't really be considering then?
Yeah, I think at the time when, you know, when they come in for a construction permit, they're going to have to. Verify that their construction techniques, one, we'll we'll go through the fifty percent rule. We'll take a look at that. And then the the second thing is, is we'll verify through their architect and their engineer that the building. Proposed will be flood compliant, if it has to be made flood compliant, whether that's through wet floodproofing or dry floodproofing.
And Mr. Kirchner, what is your water dependent use in this building? I know you said all-season marine is one of the owners. But what is the other use in this building?
So in the building itself, actually, they're going to use the first floor currently just for storage for the two companies. There's also two other buildings on site, so each company will will. Run out of one of the two buildings on site. And then in the future, they want to use the first floor potentially as access to storage and bathrooms when they expand the marina.
Okay, thank you.
As an, as a note quickly, there are. Plans in the future to repair and improve the bulkhead and then expand the marina on two different sides of the property. We didn't include that at the moment for the application, only because that's going to take. You know, a pretty substantial DEP review as part of the process, so it'll be done separately. So some consideration of the first floor of the building. Will be future use for that purposes, which is just not fully defined yet because we don't fully know what the the usage of that space is going to be.
What do you, what do you anticipate the rent of these apartments will be?
We don't actually know yet. It's hard to find comps dependent on the size, only because the the apartments would be pretty unique. Based on kind of the Sona Harbor apartments across the street, I think they're looking. Around the five dollar, I'm sorry, five thousand dollar a month range for a two-bedroom. But the building doesn't have the amenities, you know, of a gym or a pool or anything like that.
You know, the.
Yeah, they're two-bedroom, one-bathroom spaces, so. We're kind of thinking in the four thousand to five thousand dollar a month range, but that's speculative at the moment.
And please confirm, will there be heavy equipment stored on this property?
Yes, yes, there will. Not not in the base, not in this building itself. But in an adjacent building on the property, yes. GNC Marine has a couple of pieces of heavy equipment. That they use as part of the dock construction and installation.
Is is, will the layout segregate the tenants from the the machinery?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just quickly, also, as one other note, I forgot to mention. This plan has been reviewed by the Harbor Corp, and they did give us an approval.
I'm sorry, the Harbor Corp or the Harbor Commission?
Harbor Commission, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we open it up to the public? Okay, Brian, again, would you explain to the public how they can access the meeting?
Sure, so if anyone from the public would like to speak, you'd use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once. Doesn't look like anyone, Mr. Schulman.
Okay, again, let's let's just give it another minute.
Nothing.
Okay, then we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. And Mr. Kirchner, I'll turn it back to you for any final comments you wish to make.
I think that's about, you know, everything we have. We do, like I did mention, we do have a Department of Public Works sign off for water quality control on the property. And we do have a Harbor Commission sign off of the plan. I'd like to thank all of you for considering us tonight. I'm not as experienced at this as Ms. Suchi is, so I. Hope I didn't love anything too badly, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we have a draft resolution. I'm going to close the hearing.
Okay, well, I just have a quick question.
I'm sorry, then I won't close it. Go ahead, JJ.
Okay, this is about landscaping, so with so much concrete. I'm just reading through. I do not see unless I skipped it, I skipped over it. What kind of landscaping will you provide?
We don't really have any planning planned for it at the moment, but we're happy to review that and take any considerations from the zoning staff into. You know, and we happily take a look at it.
Yes, thank you.
JJ, let's. We can put something in the resolution addressing that issue. Okay, anything else? All right, then let's pull up the draft. We'll close the hearing, pull up the draft resolution. JJ, is that acceptable?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any question, any other questions about the resolution? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Is that coming? I'm sorry. Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, JJ, Ms. Byron has seconded. Let's do a roll call. This is a motion to approve the applicant's. Project.
Sure, so Ms. Tabashnik?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Abstain.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
I missed the presentation, so abstain.
Ms. Langalis?
I'm also going to abstain. I find it's a little, I don't have enough information to. Determine. I appreciate the applicant's wanting to maximize the use of their property. But we've been talking a lot about water dependent use. And I can't quite. Find the water dependent need here, so I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Mr. Rowena?
I'm going to vote yes, but before I I do, I just wanted to to say something about the abstentions. Being able to preserve a water dependent use in this economy is not easy. And we have. Talked a number of times about mixed mu- mixed uses of buildings, and I know. That there are several on the waterfront that have this type of mix. I was, I had the the privilege of of having my office on the second floor. Of a building in a marina for twenty years, and I did my law practice and also a little. Specialty business in in permitting and and yacht brokerage. So I think that this is a really good. Use for this property because the second floor of this building. Is not going to be of any kind of use for a water dependent use except for. Allowing the property to support itself, so I. Very strongly vote in favor of this, and I hope the people that have abstained would maybe change their mind.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes, and I totally agree with Mr. Rowena. We really. It's really important to be able to sustain the water dependent uses. And this kind of. Use of the property makes that possible, but I think it's important to support.
And Mr. Schulman?
I'm also going to vote, yes, I think. If this were a larger scale project, I might have voted otherwise. But given the scale and scope of the project. And the support it offers. To the water dependent uses. In my view, anyway, justifies voting in favor of it.
All right, it is approved. That's five in favor. One, no, and leave three abstentions.
Okay, let's move on on our agenda. We've held our our public hearings. We have a request for an extension of time. Twenty twenty dash five dash twenty. SP, so this was a special permit, two oh four Flax Hill Road. They are asking for an extension. Is there someone here representing them?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. Staff doesn't have a resolution for you either outside of, you know, the information we. Torted on already, so. I think it's just consistent with some prior practices, still kind of evaluating the. Project, valability of things in the market and so forth.
And as I recall, this is a request for. The traditional one-year extension?
Right, yeah, and this was, keeping in mind, was not a large-scale project to begin with, so. One year seems, you know, fairly reasonable request.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the request? Mr. Williams has moved. Is there a second? And Mr. Rowena has seconded. Do this with a show of hands, all those in favor. There anyone opposed? Ms. Tabachnik? Any abstentions? Okay, the extension is approved.
To be clear, I I voted yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I read no. My mistake. Then it's unanimous. Is approved. My apologies, Anna. The next item, something we discussed fairly recently, twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two CAM. One Cudlip Street. Clarification on the conditions of approval. Steve, is Ms. Williams going to discuss that?
There she is.
I can give a brief overview. So this application was approved at your. November fifteenth meeting, and we just have a question of the clarification of conditions. What happened was I had written a draft resolution and the applicant had provided some edits to that resolution. And then discussion of the application continued for like forty minutes after that. And then a motion was made to approve the application, but I didn't know which set of conditions were approved. And it only came down to three conditions that had been changed. In discussion with the applicant, we agreed on two of them that weren't huge changes, but there was a larger change. From the condition that I had originally drafted to what the applicant has proposed. So we figured the safest and most fair route is to come back to the commission to see exactly. Or I guess have you vote again on what that condition would be? And Steve, you're locked in, you're, you have the document open and it's locked, so I can't access it. So if you could close it or just pull it up on the screen, that would be wonderful.
Amelia, do you want the resolution or do you want, I was, does it make sense to pull up a? A mapper or something like that first versus that?
I have a map on the staff memo.
Ah, okay. Give me one sec.
Actually, I can open a read-only copy. Which I think should be fine since we're not editing anything.
I got it. You're all set.
Thank you.
Just tell me where you want me to go.
Okay, so those are just, that's what the applicant had proposed to edit, and then if you go down a little further. This is the area, or this is the map that shows. Or it's a good depiction of what my intention and my suggested condition of the resolution was to extend that buffer. Along, you can kind of see the small triangles where the wetland flags are to extend that buffer to be between the house and the wetland flags to the. And yeah, exactly where Steve's showing, and then the applicant had suggested instead of that, just having. Five four-inch by four-inch stone monuments that'd be flush with the ground to differentiate. Or I guess kind of delineate where the wetlands are versus the lawn area. So it's a pretty significant difference between what I suggested and what the applicant has suggested, so I will leave it up to the commission to discuss and. Just clarify what that one condition will be so that I can get the decision letter out to the applicant.
Amelia, can you explain to us? Why the, or to the best of your knowledge. Why the applicant does not find your recommendation acceptable?
The applicant is here. I'm not sure if he can speak. I'm just realizing, but I, my understanding, I think, is. Partially aesthetic. It is a small area between the. Between the existing structure and where I'm asking them to put the, or where I'm suggesting that they put the buffer. So I imagine it's partially access, partially aesthetic. But I, yeah, unfortunately, I can't speak to the applicant. More than that, really.
Mr. Chairman, I think you could, it's not a public hearing and it wasn't prior, so I think if you wanted to question the applicant directly, you could, you could do so.
Okay. And who is here representing the applicant?
Wilder Gleason?
Oh, okay. Mr. Gleason, can you explain that?
Yeah, I, this, this was extensively discussed during the hearing. And if you don't mind, I would like to share a screen with my, the only issue really is. Is is there supposed to be a buffer? And if I could share my screen, I could review some of the rationale that we presented. You may recall that we had this application, we graciously allowed us. Time while you took up some other items on your agenda, so we could respond to a DEEP letter. That was received the day of the hearing. And that had the very same recommendation that Amelia had put in. Have a ten-foot buffer across the back of the house. And we came back, addressed all those concerns, agreed. To implement everything that DEP said, except for the buffer. And we provided with you. As part of our presentation, we had a list. Of reasons to limit the landscape buffer. Can you see this?
Yes, we can.
Is it visible? Is it big enough for you?
That just made it smaller.
Oh, jeez.
That's fine. Thank you.
So. I recall repeating this and elaborating on this, that. We cease mowing six thousand square feet of wetlands with a six, we've got an addition that's basically one-tenth of that. The wetlands behind the house are readily identified at the toe of the slope. And by the color of the plantings, we had presented pictures that showed that there's a real color differentiation between the wetland plants. And the landscape, the lawn, which is upland. The landscape buffer would restrict access around the elevated terrace. We have lawn maintenance to NOFA standards, which asserts minimal impact on the wetlands. Typically, a buffer is installed to limit the impact of. Fertilizers and things like that from upland lawn areas. This would not be, we don't need that because we've agreed to maintain the lawn to NOFA. to, uh, maintain the lawn to NOFA standards. The, it, it doesn't reduce impact or provide greater protection. We have sheet flow, which, uh, provides particulate and, uh, thermal and particulate renovation, uh, before the water enters the wetlands. You may recall the applicants personally removed fragmites from the back of their property on the house lot and on the vacant lot. They induced their neighbors to do likewise on the, to get the fragmites removed from their properties. And then they helped the neighbors plant wetland plantings uh, on their properties as well as planted on their own property behind the vacant lot. They've restored a substantial wetland that really functions well now, which was just a mass of fragmites. And we felt that that was, uh, something went well, well beyond what you would normally expect. And that they were entitled to some sort of dispensation from what could be the D E P and a staff standard recommendation, ten-foot buffer at the edge of the wetlands. Um, and we also had made major concessions with the Z B A to merge a separate build of a lot. I then looked at the Vimeo, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Um, but, um, I then looked at the Vimeo of the deliberations. And I think there were some people who were inclined to say no. In fact, Mr. Lachey, uh, Mr. Mosack said he was not going to vote in favor of it because, um, a fence, a stone wall had been installed, but he said we made the case to eliminate the buffer, and he didn't think a buffer was required. Uh, I, I'm trying to refresh your recollection of your deliberations. And then I think, um, Ms. Langala said she didn't think a buffer was necessary and was inclined to move forward and not wait for staff to come in and, uh, deal, make a presentation about the buffer. And Mr. Rowena had the same take. He wasn't sure that having a further discussion with staff would change his mind about whether a buffer was required, and he was not inclined to have a buffer. And I think Ms. Wells came up and said she agreed with Mr. Rowena. So I had three of you saying no buffer. And then the other two people who voted in favor were Mr. Williams, who voted last, after Mr. Schulman voted to approve. And so the context of your deliberations in the Vimeo indicated to me that no buffer was required and that our arguments in favor of not having a buffer behind the house were persuasive to you. And so, uh, when Amelia suggested that we agreed to install a buffer, I resisted, and that's why we're here. So, um, I hope that's helpful to you.
Uh, and Amelia, um, I, e- excuse my poor memory. What is the reason, um, you have recommended, uh, that they install the buffer?
Um, and I also do a lot of applications or some applications for the, uh, Conservation Commission or the Inland Wetland Agency, so using my knowledge of inland wetlands and applying it to tidal wetlands, um, we very frequently have buffers outlining to delineate wetlands from lawn area. And it's not just for current owners who may be good stewards to the wetlands, but for, you know, potential future owners, if they sell the house soon. It's just having more permanent physical buffer there so that, that, um, very important tidal wetland area isn't maintained as lawn. And it, uh, can help filter any drainage that goes into the tidal wetlands. Essentially, it's I do think it provides more protection than not having anything there. I do think it enhances it. I think it's great that they've done so much work on that tidal wetland on the adjacent lot. And I think it would be great if it could be continued to the overall tidal wetland. I don't know that it's necessary, or I don't know why we wouldn't continue that maintenance of the tidal wetlands in that way, not across the entire property.
Can, um, you pull up, uh, your recommendation, um?
So this would be, I guess, my recommendation, um, this is what I had originally drafted in yellow was the condition that, uh, we're mostly concerned about. Green is what we'd agreed to with the applicant. So that's still something if any commissioners have comments about or wanted to discuss, I think would be relevant at this time. But I, essentially, I'm still suggesting that, um, or I'm not really changing my mind from what I had said earlier. I didn't want to change anything, just this is what I had presented at, or suggest. This is the draft resolution I had for the November fifteenth meeting, was that the buffer be depicted on the landscape plan and submitted to an, um, and approved by staff before the zoning permit? So I didn't have, we didn't have a landscaping plan that I wanted approved, but if but I don't think
It wasn't clear what we were voting on? Because we didn't have this resolution up when we took the vote?
This, so the resolu- this resolution was presented, I think, towards the beginning of the discussion. And that is when the app, or at some point during the meeting, this resolution was brought up. At another point, the applicant had, as, uh, Attorney Gleason had mentioned, they wanted time to respond to the deep letter, which you allowed them to do, and then they came back and uh, brought up an edited version of this resolution. So both resolutions were looked at and discussed to an extent, but the discussion continued, not necessarily pertaining to a specific resolution for about forty minutes. And then a motion was just made to approve, but there was nothing in the video indicating which resolution you were voting to approve, whether it was the one staff had drafted or if it was the one that Attorney Gleason had edited.
Amelia, would it make any sense to, rather than talk about the buffer and what it is to say, okay, they can't have a lawn? Because is that the concern that they're going to fertilize the lawn and the runoff is going to go into the river?
So the, that area that is being maintained as lawn, the applicant has also already agreed to no longer mow it and maintain it as lawn, and that is under deep jurisdiction. So I don't know that that is something this commission would be able to enforce. But that's what we had agreed to condition thirteen as, is that the mowing and the tidal wetlands cease. And it's still subject to deep regulation because that area is all tidal wetlands, which is state jurisdiction.
Okay, so not to split hairs, but if it's not grass, let's just say, why would you mow it? So if you uh, apply a restriction of what can or cannot be there, rather than saying it has to be a buffer, say, it can't be grass. Would that help?
That's, so my thought there is that it, because that is the state's jurisdiction, I don't know that we can uh, implore a condition to restrict what is allowed to be grown there or not grown there.
Okay.
So that's why I suggested that, because that's within the jurisdiction, it is relevant to the CAM Act, and it's not regulating something that isn't under your jurisdiction.
Okay.
And the deep letter said we concur with the staff that a minimum of a ten-foot wide buffer be provided. I don't know. Seems fairly clear.
Mr. Chairman, just, I think maybe Ms. Tabachnik just raises a good point. I think that I don't think the staff recommendation is that the entire wetland buffer needs to be planted with native plants and wetland species, but I think it's indicating a ten-foot buffer. It is, if you pull up the aerial photo, there's a pretty substantial separation between the house and, and where the water starts, so I don't, I don't think a ten-foot nicely planted native buffer would impact anybody's enjoyment or use of the property.
Galen?
Uh, I think that Amelia made a good point. What, what happens with the property sold? I'd like to ask, uh, Attorney Gleason, uh, how they would ensure that a subsequent owner would continue to be good stewards and respect the buffer, you know, the buffer area.
I mean, uh, uh, my own feeling is that, um, we, these people are, they have little kids, they're going to be here for the next twenty years. Uh, likely, I just, you know, I, this, this is their forever house, as far as they're concerned, foreseeable future. Now, obviously, at some point forty years from now, thirty years from now, they will sell it. Um, I think the most important thing for you all is it, is to make sure that it's not uh, that the wetlands are not mowed. That's going to be readily visible from the street. And the buffer doesn't add to that enforcement concern. And if you have a concern, we are, we're proposing, you know, um, these, uh, these, um, monuments where someone could inspect and readily determine whether we're mowing the wetlands. The buffer itself doesn't, the landscape buffer itself doesn't really change things because typically you put buffers in when you're trying to, uh, protect the wetlands or the adjacent up, uh, inland wetlands from, um, fertilizers and things that are in the lawn. But we've agreed as part of this, and it should be in here in some way, uh, that we are going to maintain the lawn to NOFA standards. That's a national organization that prohibits the standard, you know, Scott's uh, fertilizers, et cetera. It's only organic stuff that's going on. And it would seem to me that that would be of greater protection to wetlands than what a landscape buffer does. And, um, that, uh, uh, I also recall, having just reviewed the Vimeo that Mrs. La- uh, that, you know, uh, as I said earlier, that Mr. Rowena, Ms. Langalas, and you, Galen, um, as well as one of the persons who voted no, uh, Mr. uh, Munchak said, uh, no buffer was required. And you didn't think it was necessary in light of all that the applicant had done. Um, and I, I, I just want to refresh your recollection about that. Because, uh, now, if you feel that we should be putting something other than monuments to mark the edge of the wetlands, so it's more visible, I, we could put boulders in there if you want, we prefer not to. But I, I just, I, I'm sitting here saying, um, I was pretty clear, and I just read the Vimeo. I, I listened to the Vimeo in the last hour of your discussion. And it was really clear to me that three of the five people who voted in favor specifically said we don't want a buffer, and Mr. uh, Mouchak said, they've convinced me a buffer's not needed.
But we didn't actually vote, um, the question, and the vote was unclear. So do we need to have a vote?
Yeah, and that's the issue for you, is do you want to impose a buffer or not?
We should, we should vote on this one, on this one item. Yes.
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, uh, Attorney Gleason, you, you had indicated that, um, um, that there would be possibly monuments installed. When you're using that term, are you talking about, um, you know, something similar to what the surveyors use, which would be fairly permanent mark in the ground?
Absolutely. It's the four-by-four marble posts the surveyors use, used to use to mark property lines. They're now using iron pins. These are readily discernible, they can find them easily. And they would be at the edge of the wetland. We have five of them proposed in our landscaping plan. If you, uh, if you could, whoever's got the share screen can go up to our landscape plan. And we had proposed, right here, if I can, the, we had five monuments proposed uh, from the vacant lot across to the, uh, the, uh, right side of the house lot. And three of them at least were on, uh, uh, four of them, I think, uh, well, yeah, three or four of them were on the house lot.
Well, I, I just, I asked you that question because, um, to me, a monument in the context of what a surveyor uses is a permanent installation. This, if I recall correctly, it's like an upside-down pyramid that goes into the ground about five feet made out of granite that is marked by a surveyor. So what I'm asking you is, um, are you proposing putting these monuments in, and then as part of your permit approval process, um, having a map that indicates their location?
Absolutely. We've, and, and they're not a, a reverse pyramid. They're, my understanding is they are four-by-four posts, basically, that is buried three feet in the ground or so.
All right, well, maybe they changed in the fifty years I've been around.
Yeah, well, you and I have both been out there that way.
Yes. Um, so what I, what I'm thinking, um, especially with regard to Commissioner, um, Galen Wells, uh, question is um, all of the real estate transactions that I'm involved in involve a two-prong title search. One is the land records, the other one is the administrative agencies of the town or city in which the property is. So it would seem to me if this permit was given and there was a condition about these monuments and a map was on file, that would be available not, not available, it would be something that would be actual notice that any buyer that came after this permit was granted or not. Um, so I'm, I'm really not concerned about a new buyer not knowing about it, and um, I'm, I'm satisfied with the, with the use of monuments as a delineation of the wetland.
Could, could I just ask, uh, Mr. Ro- Rowena, I, um, we had proposed this, I'm happy to have a map recorded in the town uh, land records, if you wish, that shows the monuments, if you want to make that a condition of the approval.
Yeah, that's another old expression, belt and suspenders.
Yeah, and that would give you belts and suspenders, and, um, I think my clients would be perfectly happy to do that.
Good.
Richard, um, in order to, uh, uh, attempt to move this forward, uh, do you want to, uh, put that in the, uh, form of a, uh, motion?
Um, yes, I would like to, um, I guess that would be, what would that be, an amendment to the resolution or the acceptance of one of two resolutions? I'm not sure.
An amendment, an amend, I think amendment to the resolution, uh, would, would, would be a fair dis-
Could I just ask, could we put up my proposal on this, so you have that? Okay? And then if you wanted to amend that, that would become the condition. Richard, if that's helpful. Number nine would become a stipulation thirteen, I think, in the, in the final resolution.
Attorney Gleason, could, could you answer, um, why your clients don't like the idea of the buffer and prefer the monument?
Well, I, I think, um, they frankly, there's a visual, they are, they, they have, their, their pool is down very low. If you have a landscape buffer, it takes, it's going to infringe on access to um, their, um, their deck and other places. They would like to, uh, 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 they're not going to mow the wetlands, so that will eventually grow. But it takes up a bunch of the back lawn. And, um, we have a, an addition that is eleven feet from the stairway down to the, um, uh, from the elevated terrace down to the, uh, it's eleven feet from the wetlands. If you put a ten-foot buffer in there, I've got one foot to get around, and that makes no sense. And, um, so that, uh, it, 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 you know, and plus they've merged their property. So we now have a lot that is three times the minimum size. And, um, it just, given what they've done, it made sense. And if you have the enforcement measure that Ri- um, Attorney Rowena has suggested, it would seem to me that gets you where you need to go.
I have a question, Mr. Schulman?
Yeah?
Um, for Mr. Gleason.
I was looking at the map wrong, I think.
Because the landscape plan is what we had, yeah.
Hey, okay, I wasn't sure if my audio was working. Yes, um, could, uh, I'm not sure if you're sharing this screen, I think it's, uh, Amelia, could you scroll up to, to the map real quick? Um, Mr. Gleason, so, um, from your, your presentation, and what I'm gathering, it sounds like, um, the, the concern of, um, your client is having the, the landscape buffer obstructed use from the, from the deck and the pool. Um, do you, you, would you, or would your client be amiable to extending out that buffer maybe kind of around that corner and maybe up towards? I'm trying to read this here, but maybe like halfway between where it, where it ends and where the, the, um, walk is out to the um, out to the dock, basically to give a little bit more buffer around where it is kind of narrow, uh, tidal wetlands, um, and, uh, rather close between the, um, the, the lawn, if you will, and, and the tidal marsh. Um, which I think would achieve a similar goal to what's, uh, achieved on the, uh, property to the left where uh, the, the tidal marsh or the tidal wetlands is very narrow.
I, I, I'm not understanding your suggestion here, but the, um, can you just clarify for me, where would it go? Can, uh, whoever's got the cursor, where would it go? You're proposing it go there? That's exactly That's exactly the area where we don't want it, because if you look, there's stairs coming down from the elevated terrace of the proposed addition. And those stairs are 11 feet, I think, we're, we're 11, 13 feet. So if you put a 10-foot buffer across here, we're going to be three feet away. The corner of our elevated terrace, which I think is 11 feet from the buffer, from the wetlands, would be, you'd have the buffer going right underneath the elevated terrace. And, you know, if you wanted something, I, I, I can't speak for them. We, I talked to them, they're not here. I was pretty, I, I, when I read the discussion and it was, and for the record, I think the people who were voting on this application should be the ones discussing it tonight, not everyone else. I mean, it should be the ones voting on it. Discussions, I appreciate, Mr. Bryce, what you're suggesting. But I think that's exactly the reason why we didn't propose it, because it came so close to the proposed addition. And we were forced to push that addition back by the zoning board of appeals. We can't move it forward. We asked for a variance, would have made it much closer to the street, seven or eight feet closer to the street and further from the wetlands. And they said, uh-uh, go back, push it back towards the wetlands. So that's what we did.
What about instead of a 10-foot buffer in, in that space where it is quite narrow, like you mentioned around the, the new terrace? What if it were, say, like a five-foot buffer?
That's definitely a possibility. That's why the condition I had written was a little, it didn't specify 10-foot. That's what Deep consistently recommends for buffers or untitled wetlands, which I think I had mentioned in the memo. But in the resolution, it just said landscaping plan approved by staff. So if it did need to be thinner there for access, that's fine. Or like you had suggested, it doesn't go all the way across to the pool. So it's up to you if you do want to require or have the buffer be smaller. If you're okay allowing that, it doesn't have to extend the whole way. There's definitely leeway in what the commission's intention in requiring a buffer or not requiring one is.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I'm most concerned where the tidal wetlands really starts to, to narrow there. And would like to have a consistent buffer along that, that narrow stretch, where the, the wetlands are a bit wider. And, you know, I, I can understand a little bit of the applicant's concerns, but yeah, like where you're highlighting with the cursor. You know, and I, I understand if that needs to be a narrower buffer in order to maintain access and such. But I, I feel like we can do something a little more than zero there in order to protect the tidal marsh.
It also feels weird to, to sort of argue that on the right side of the screen, it's fine to have these monuments. But on the left side, it makes sense to have the buffer. Like if the right side is fine for monuments, why wouldn't you just do monuments all the way across? And if there is a reason for the buffer on the left side, why wouldn't you also need a buffer on the right side?
And I think it's because of the topography, the, the left side is much higher than the right side. It's not
Thank you.
level field. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it is flatter in the back. Once you get down and the lower level, I mean, the dwelling right now is at the high point. And that sort of extends all the way across the front. But it's much deeper, the house lot is much deeper. So that you've got, and in any event, we just felt that it was appropriate not to have a buffer there because of the impact it would have on access to the proposed addition, as well as scrunching up against the pool. And so, I mean, if you're proposing, say, a five-foot buffer, we'll live whatever, with whatever you impose. We just wanted to avoid having a buffer, if possible. And, and we thought that providing monuments would be an appropriate alternative.
I, I'd like to see if there is support for Chapin's recommendation of a smaller buffer.
By the way, for the record, I believe the only people who should be voting on this should be the people who were participants before. I believe legally, there, you, those are the people that have to do it. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong in your view. Because this is, I, I don't think people who were not participating and didn't hear the whole hearing should be voting on whether or not they decided to impose a buffer.
Yeah, I think that's probably a safe approach.
Otherwise, I think you open yourselves up to, you don't want to do that.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Well, in that case, can you name the participants who were voting that evening?
Well, yeah, I just pulled it up.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, so it'd be Mr. Rowena, Mr. Schulman, Ms. Wells, Ms. Langgallis, Ms. Jordan Byron, Mr. Bryce, Ms. Tabashnik, and Mr. Kanter. So it looks like just Mr. Williams would not participate. Mr. Newshack did, but he's no longer a commissioner, so.
Okay.
So it would probably be everyone here except for, for Mr. Williams.
Well, me, I believe I was president.
You were. Mr. Williams was president.
Yes, I'm, I'm the one.
You've got the right one?
Yes, because I, I brought up the deep letter.
You did. You maintained until the end.
And, and I was, and I wanted you here, Amelia, to prevent situations like this.
All right, again, I want to see if there is support for a reduced buffer.
Can you be more specific about what that?
Well, we can, we can talk about that. I, I just want to.
Because you talked about the going halfway versus the five feet.
Right, yeah, I mean, it could be five.
Yeah, I see it, I see it.
Pardon me?
I was just taking another, I think I was under the, the previous, that's why it didn't show Mr. Williams. So yeah, Mr. Williams was, was there.
Brian, can you make, make this down so I can see everyone? Thank you.
Lou, if I could make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Maybe an aerial photograph would help people understand this a little bit better. If Brian or Steve could pull up like a Google Earth shot as opposed to just the paper survey.
I had one up.
And then just to correct myself on who did vote, it does not look like Mr. Bryce voted. I think that's when we were swapping between alternates at the time.
Okay.
So, something that just comes to mind when looking at this, the yellow square is the primary residence. And the green outline to the right is the land that will never be built on. The buffer, ideally, if there is one or not, or the monuments look, you know, as if they should go over into the neighbor's property to the west. And so in a weird way, if you put the buffer in, it's just going to be in the middle of the yellow rectangular piece of property. And over the years, back, back in the day, I, I think Mr. Gleason mentioned, or the applicant did last time, there used to be a little barn, a little kind of boat shed down in the bottom right-hand side of the yellow square. And over time, as the tides got a little bit higher, you know, that, that little barn was, it was always people drove by when you could see with it before the stone wall was there. It was like, oh, is the barn in the water? How big is the storm? You know, is it going to fill up? How far does the water come in? And, I mean, it definitely is somewhat of a floodplain there. So the applicants, I guess, you know, set their own risk. If they don't put the buffer, maybe their property is at a little bit more risk. But you can see, I think it just gives a better visual. Um, thank you for that, Tammy. I do have a question, Attorney Gleason. Why are you opposed to new voices with fresh eyes having an opinion?
Because legally, I don't think people who didn't vote on the last application are authorized to hear and make this decision about a condition of a vote that they took to approve this.
But now we have new information.
But JJ, we, we could argue it either way. But I think the safest thing to do is to have Chapin remove himself from the vote. I don't, that's number one. Number two, frankly, I don't think it's going to affect the outcome. But, again, if we're talking about belts and suspenders to protect the commission, that is probably the way to go.
That's my concern, is I think the vote would be subject to challenge, and I'd prefer to have one that's binding.
So I'm going to go back to that earlier question, nonetheless, about a, a smaller buffer. Is there support for a smaller buffer? Or do you simply want the monument on the property with, as Richard has suggested, notification in the record?
Honestly, I could go either way, Lou.
Okay. Other feedback?
I'd like Amelia's opinion on this.
My opinion would probably be, I think, I would prefer seeing a buffer there instead of monuments. But it is really up to, to your discretion of how, to what extent you want that buffer. Or if you wanted to compromise not have a buffer, maybe having stone boulders there to kind of make it a little more visually delineated between the lawn area and the wetland area, and to prevent large mowing equipment and things like that from easily accessing the lawn for potential future owners who might not have the, may have title searches, but might not pay attention to the small details.
Thank you. Personally, I'm fine with the, with the monuments.
Okay, thank, thank you, Galen. Other feedback?
I'm fine with the monuments, obviously. And, and I, I just have to say, and, and I'm not trying to pick a fight with anybody, that I can understand us saying that you can't do something in your yard because of a wetland. But, you know, making somebody do something on top of it, I, I just don't think is right. I think the offer of the monuments to delineate the wetland is more than sufficient.
Yeah, other feedback?
Would the monuments be affected by rising, by rising tides?
No.
All right, well, Richard, in order to.
I don't, I guess, two things. To Richard's, to, to Richard's point, I feel like a lot of times we required property owners to put in landscaping or add three more trees or have this buffer, that buffer.
Oh, I agree with that, if it accomplishes something.
Right, but it, so it sounds like this is what Deep recommended, this what Amelia recommends. So I guess my question would be, why, why? Amelia, you said this sort of standard recommendation for protecting coastal wetlands. Why doesn't the recommendation usually say monuments? Like, why does it have to be landscape? Why is that important?
I'm so sorry, Anna, you cut out a little bit. Were you asking me that question?
Yeah, if, if you know, like if this standard thing, like have a landscaping buffer between wetlands and blah, blah, blah. Why doesn't it say landscaping buffer or monuments? Like, why, why is it important that it's landscaping and not something else?
I think it's definitely to enhance the resources, to see plantings there and things like water filtration, having it be a visual demarcation and also, yeah, enhancing the wetlands and then including more plants there. I think a big part of it is not having it maintained as something else like lawn. And I can't speak to Deep, but assuming it's very similar to my experience with inland wetlands, it's really there to delineate and to, to enhance it. So the inland wetland agency is always encouraging plantings in and around wetlands. So I assume that's also Deep's mindset with tidal wetlands.
All right, again, in the interest of moving this forward, Richard, why don't you give me a resolution regarding the monuments and we'll vote on that? We'll vote it up or we'll?
My resolution is that rather than a vegetative buffer that a minimum of five monuments be set and delineated on a survey that would then be recorded on the land records indicating they are delineating the wetland line.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Uh, so Tammy seconds. Let's do a roll call. Brian or Steve?
So everybody's voting except for Mr. Bryce, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so Ms. Wells?
You're muted, Galen.
Muted, Galen.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Ms. Tabachnik?
No.
Mr. Kanter?
No.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
I stang.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
No. That looks like four to three. Is four sufficient to approve it?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we had the, got the right count. Can you do a quick raise your hand?
What's that, Steve? You want to see your hands raised?
Yeah, who voted yes?
The yeses?
Lou, you're doing yes, you didn't go yes.
You're right, okay.
Yeses?
Put your hand up, please.
If you could, I just didn't go on to make sure. That's four.
That's four.
And one abstention, so it would pass.
Okay. All right, then let's move on.
No, we need, we need a, what are we doing about a buffer then?
They voted for the monuments that Commissioner Rowena had proposed and filing on the Norwalk land records.
In favor of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, next item is the capital budget discussion.
Sorry, do we need to take action on the other two items that were? Did we just vote on only item nine, or do we need to vote on the other two items that were in that document as well?
No, the other two, the staff and the applicant had reached agreement.
Cool, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Thanks for doing that. Okay, Steve, you want to start us off on the capital budget?
Sure, I'll actually turn it over to Brian, let him.
Okay.
Yes, so at this point, we have three commission members who are, who have volunteered to participate in the capital budget meetings or hopefully just meeting with all the departments. That would be Ms. Langgallis, who would chair it, Mr. Kanter and Mr. Williams. As many of you are welcome to attend as, as you'd like. What we are planning on doing is holding one all-day meeting with all the departments at City Hall or also via Zoom that you can attend and, and have the departments come in and give their presentations to you. Right now, it is, we are tentatively hoping to have that on January 19th. That seems to be the date where most departments are indicating that they'd be able to make it. And then at this point, we are, we, we'd hold the public hearing for the capital budget on your February 7th meeting.
Okay, Brian, the meeting on the 19th, what time does that begin?
So we haven't made that decision yet. It would probably start sometime around 9:00 AM. And then we'd hopefully have it go throughout the day, take a lunch break. We'll provide lunch for you all. And then have that run until probably as long as we need to, to, to get through everybody.
Okay, Tammy, I'll try and make that meeting.
Thank you, Lou.
Okay, anything else on the capital budget?
That's it for now. I'll, I'll follow up with everyone to, with updates on when you are getting your capital budget binders.
Okay. I have mentioned to. I have mentioned uh to uh the staff, uh, two things, uh. Uh, number one, uh, to make certain. Uh, that the department uh heads are telling us. Um, where in the P O C D their capital items fall. And uh number two, alerting particularly the Board of Education. Uh, not to get their supporters out at our public hearing. Uh, as they did last year, uh, because it was counterproductive. It was a waste of their time. Uh, waste of our time and uh just led to unnecessary hard feelings. Because it is not our role to uh rule on anything other than. Whether uh the capital budget request meets the requirements of the P O C D. Okay, uh, with that, um, we'll.
Just to clarify then, sorry, um, at the. Meeting on the nineteenth and with the other, you know, volunteers here on our commission. It, we're going to be in person at City Hall, but is the public going to be invited to participate by Zoom or something? Is that what?
Yeah, so it would be publicly available, it'd be noticed as like a a typical meeting. You remember last year, we did these as like three separate night meetings? Um, but we're kind of just hoping that this could just be one all-day meeting, since there's no public participation that can happen. They can, the public's welcome to either, if they can, they can watch the meeting via Zoom, they could attend, come in City Hall, or they could just watch the recording.
Okay, so we're not going to have to sit, say, in the big um meeting room all day.
Now, we'll have you.
Else there, just the participants, okay, and. I I recently scheduled a taxing district meeting for the nineteenth at nine. Is there any way we could start this at ten?
Yeah, I think it's flexible right now on on.
Ten fifteen would probably be great. It's not great, but you know, there's only so many days on the calendar. This is sorry.
It's okay.
I'm not sure I could go past two or three. On the nineteenth.
Okay. Yeah, if we need a second meeting, we need a second meeting.
But another day I could probably do more.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, comments to the director?
Um, Brian had sent out a memo late this afternoon. I'm not sure if we've had a chance to take a peek at it. As we kind of anticipated, there were going to be some bumps, some bruises along the way with the rewrite. We found one little clarification we'd like to. Incorporate before the document goes live on February nineteenth. Um, unfortunately, that does require. Uh, we have to send out referrals and a public hearing on that amendment. The ma- amendment basically just clarifies. And makes consistent what you've already kind of discussed that. Applications above a certain size do require um commission approval via site plan application. Which is the the existing language that was there. The more I read it, the less comfortable I was with it and wanted to just make it more clear. Um, just so if we get uh, you know, avoid on, you know, arguing with somebody about something, particularly in the commercial zones about whether. Their particular project requires site plan approval or not. The only real thing this, you know, impact-wise for you on on your workload is it's it adds in a. That public hearing item, which would be in February. Uh, and we we would make the kind of request that we either, we're not going to ask you to do another meeting. We just keep your two meetings a- as you would have scheduled. The question would be whether could we move your. February seventh meeting back a week or move up your February twenty-first meeting up a week. So you'd meet on either the seventh and fourteenth or fourteenth and twenty-first, so I didn't, that was kind of the only thing we wanted to get. Clarification from you folks on unless you had questions about the language itself.
I went, I went over the document. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory and pretty straightforward. Um, I don't, I don't see this as a big deal or big issue.
And for scheduling purposes, now that I'm thinking about how we just talked about capital budget, it'd probably. Make the most sense to move up the meeting on the twenty-first to the fourteenth. Um, just because if we have to hold our capital budget. Meeting um. On the seventh. Um, I wouldn't want, because it has to be held by the fifteenth, so I wouldn't want to like have to uh. That hearing plus the capital budget hearing on the same agenda.
Just to keep in mind, the fourteenth is Valentine's Day, that's going to cause. Issues for it.
Steve, the the clarification that you're talking about, when I, when I read that, I was thinking to myself, gee, didn't, didn't we? Talk about that and vote on it already?
We, yeah, we did relate it to sustainability and we kind of implied that, but it's not. Specifically stated as such, and I don't want to take. You know, Brian and I kind of talked like, well, well, can we just include it in there? Because that's basically what they said, but. It doesn't specifically state that in the section we're referring to, and I don't want. Anybody to accuse us of adding text in without having that gone through the public eye, so I just.
If I can make a humble suggestion, uh, put it on the earlier meetings to to give yourself enough time to get to the printers, because I can't imagine. This is going to take us all night to discuss.
No, yeah, I think it gives, sticking to that timeframe gives us enough time to get it into the final document. Printed and then get it out the door.
Uh, why can't you add an amendment? Or what about doing it on January thirty-first? I know that.
Yeah, we can't.
I'm not in favor of adding more Wednesdays of meetings. I love being with you all, but there happened to be five. Wednesdays in January.
The the problem is we have to do a thirty-five day referral and the thirty-five days. Starting tomorrow. Puts it at February eighth, the day after your meeting, which is just Murphy's Law.
All right, so there's no way we can get around that. There's like the department for one little sentence couldn't make an exception?
No, I I the unfortunately, the statutory timeframes are frames are what they are. I'd love to ignore them, but.
Okay. Just a thought, sorry.
Yeah, we we thought we argued about that quite a bit, but sorry.
Okay, anything else, Steve?
Nope, that was all.
Okay. At uh our last meeting, uh, several of you suggested um. Uh, we try and go out with uh. Mike uh to honor his years of uh service. Um, the. Uh, I think it would also be nice for us to get together. Uh, and the staff has suggested this. Uh, for a drink, uh. Just given what we've all been through. Um, I contacted Mike, he was not available, um. For, and we knew this was going to be a short meeting, but he was not available. I think he's still in Texas and won't be back. Uh, until next week. So uh I was wondering if uh we might meet at um. Uh, the Norwalk Inn. Uh, after our next me- immediately after our next meeting, invite uh Mike to join us. And it would be both a celebration of um. Uh, his years with um the commissions and uh our own celebration for what we've accomplished.
We're moved.
Is that good with uh with everybody? Okay.
Meeting be in person then at City Hall?
Uh, it doesn't have to be, uh, you can come from your house. If you're more.
I'm a lot closer to City Hall and and Norwalk Inn than I am at my house, but anyways, that's fine. I can drive over. Uh, will 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 there be a short agenda that evening?
Uh, it it's a rela- Steve, I, am I correct? It's a relatively short agenda?
What night are we talking about?
Uh, we're talking about a Wednesday?
The seventeenth.
January seventeenth.
Potentially, I'll know more in the next day or so. There were a couple. There yet, there was a couple outstanding public hearings that. Had information going back and forth. I don't know if they're going to be. Completed and ready to go by the seventeenth.
Yeah, I think the only two that we know of. Right now are like the Costco um application and then Six Butler. Um, and Six Butler could get pushed off depending on how quickly Bob uh Griswatz can get his architectural review completed.
Yeah, the Merit Seven too, part the o- opening of that, but I don't know. I don't know if that's going to be at that juncture or not.
So we're looking at like maybe eight PM meeting?
Maybe nine PM, I don't know. I don't want to say for certain.
Maybe eleven, really.
No, we will. St- 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 Steve will go for the first drink, I'll go for the second. Okay, um. Is there uh anything else uh? People want to bring up?
Just a quick editorial comment. Um, I take my dog to walk in the, in the um. Park there or the woods behind the school over on Noah Lot in Cranberry.
The new, the new, the new Cranberry.
Boy, I'll tell you, it's worth a ride and just a little walk around to see that school. Um, if that's a preview of what Norwalk High School and and. The new school in South Mark is going to turn out to be, it's very impressive, I have to say.
I was, uh, I was actually there for the opening of the school, so I toured the inside. Of the school and it is very impressive indeed, uh.
Yeah, the 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 um. Play, but when I went there this weekend, there were actually a lot of families inside um. The playground areas with their kids. It was really, it was really nice to see. Really nice job they did.
Right.
Uh, anything else?
Nope. Oh, just that the wall is down on North Water Street, that ugly wall.
Oh, yeah.
You noticed?
Um, is that a prelude to uh, because they've also been working at the ground level? Is that a prelude to uh anything going on there?
Looks like they were leveling the land, like, you know, really carefully, smoothly. I hope it's not just going to be a parking lot. Steve, what do you know?
I don't know at that specific location. I know they're starting to ramp up activity at a bunch of different locations now.
For the on going underneath the river.
Yeah, that's part of the overall walk bridge program, yeah.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else, I'll um ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we've got several people who motioned to adjourn. Um, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Look forward to seeing you all on the seventeenth.
Thank you. Good night.